I don't want to step on anybody's toes with reflection, but I can jump in a little bit to maybe start a conversation. I, um, I know that this is kind of ridiculous coming from a white woman. But I, my, uh, my cousins are half Chinese. My aunt, um, her parents came from China and then she grew up mostly in Texas. And then ended up here where I am in sort of the Northwest region. And so my whole life I've known my cousins as just kind of like, you know, my cousins and haven't really thought about the aspect of race that's involved with their lives. And especially, um, especially this last year because there's been so much violence and so much hate surrounding the AAPI community. We've started to have more conversations about that. I've started to, you know, sort of ask them about their experiences. And, um, it's been sort of a, a, a really sad and shocking thing. They also mentioned that because they're mixed race, because they're half white and half Chinese. That's been something that they've also been struggling with, feeling that those feelings of, um, you know, still, still like having, having that hate surrounding because they look Chinese, but not feeling Chinese enough at the same time. And, um, and so anyway, after the terrible thing that happened last month, you know, we, we kind of started a conversation about that. And, um, it was interesting to get their perspectives and, and think really about like the own, the people that are actually in my own family who have experienced like a really difficult year and, you know, a difficult sort of experience too of being constantly sexualized for their race. And I have, uh, all three of my cousins are female. And, um, and so anyway, that was, that was kind of a, uh, an eye opening conversation to have with them because, um, it's not something that we'd really talked a lot about before. And so it was, um, really helpful, I think, for me to reach out to them and, and ask them what they thought was appropriate for, you know, me to do and the rest of our family to do to support them.
Thanks for sharing Chloe. Um, I know, um, just to jump in, um, we've been having conversations at my workplace as well. Um, and sad to say, I actually kind of got into it with my boss on the other day over it because I brought it up and she was like, well, we don't know the motive yet. NPR said, we don't know the motive yet. And I just kind of stared at her and I was like, I think we know the motive, like, why is this up for debate? And so we kind of like got into this, like, you know, kind of heated, uh, you know? And then she kind of was like, well, are you calling me racist? And I was like, uh, you know, I'm just saying like, I feel like we can all kind of read between the lines here. And I think we can't rule out that this was a racially motivated attack. Um, and so I know personally in my workplace, I also work at, um, kind of a conservative university. And so you can kind of imagine some of the struggles that we have there. Um, some conversations that desperately need to happen that, um, I feel aren't happening. Um, so that's just, um, from my perspective, I know I've encountered people who, um, unfortunately aren't seeing this for what it is and aren't taking this seriously. And I've kind of been trying to figure out how to reach people, uh, myself. Um, and so I, I'd be interested in hearing from all of you too. Heidi said same thing happened, happened at their work too. And it can be hard, um, I think when it's like your supervisor, um, when you get into conversations like that, um, you obviously want to speak your mind, um, but you know, there's, there's kind of that power dynamic there. Um, I'm sure I'm not the only one who deals with that. Heidi, not to put you on the spot, but did you want to elaborate on your experience at all? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm having a little bit of technical difficulty, but, um, yeah. With that, especially for me, it was one of my fellow coworkers. So it wasn't coming from like a hierarchical place. But she even said it to one of my coworkers who's Vietnamese. And I could tell it really upset my friend. And I spoke up and I was like, no, it's, it's definitely a hate crime. And I was talking to her when, um, I tried to kind of like disrupt what she was saying and try to use like the bystander, um, sort of the Ds. And, um, after I spoke to my friend who's Vietnamese and was trying to make sure she was okay. And then later, when I was alone with a coworker who said that it was, it just happened to be like that. And it was because of his, um, porn addiction or sex addiction, whatever. And I was like, oh, well, that's directly connected to the over-sexualization and fetishization of Asian women. And those things can't be separated. Um, and she's, she kind of was like, okay. And we spoke a little bit more about like the overall history of specifically American kind of imperialization and also women, specifically Asian women being targeted, um, for that historically in the United States. And she was like, okay. And we had a good conversation about it, but I could tell that it really upset my friend and, um, yeah.
Well, like Chloe said, I mean, way, way to speak up, you know? I think that that's something that we need to do. And it can be hard with people that, you know, you work for or you work with. Because obviously that can create tension, um, but you know, these things need to be said. So I really applaud you for that.
Yeah, I, I want to echo that too. Thank you for sharing that Heidi and, and thank you for doing what you did. I think, uh, you mentioned the, the Ds. I, I'm guessing maybe you took a Hollaback training or, or maybe you read about it or it was shared with you. Yeah. And, oh, I, I think Laura's going to bring this up later, but, um, I, I took those trainings. I found them very helpful. To give you a little background, I'm, I'm a, uh, any, any MPN board member. Uh, I'm Korean-American. I'm second generation. My, my parents both immigrated from Korea. Um, I, I just, I have so many thoughts. I was like, I don't want to jump in too soon because I feel like I could, I could dominate. But, um, it's to me, the thing that is just the most stark, not just with what happened in Atlanta, but just the conversations and events of the past year. It's, it's really sick and sad to me that it takes a tragedy of just a completely undeniable level for people to really talk about these things. And, and even as several of you have brought up now, for people to even accept that they're happening and that they are motivated by race, motivated by, uh, misogyny. I mean, you know, like take your pick, um, anti-trans kind of like, I just, you know, like, I, I feel like for many American people, it's easy to just kind of go about your life and think like, things are fine. Um, I'm fine. My family's okay. Everyone I know, because we are very segregated and it's easy to like be in a bubble and to kind of stay there. So it, it's extremely sad to me that it took this level of tragedy for, for people to kind of like open their eyes a little bit. But, um, I, I'm glad conversations are happening. I'm glad people are doing these kinds of trainings. Again, Heidi, I, I'm glad people are, are really standing up and they're understanding. Uh, I've heard a lot of people really learning for the first time, the history of Asian people in America. Um, I, I live and work in Milwaukee now, but I, I used to live in New York. And, uh, one of the museums I worked at was the Museum of Chinese in America. And where, where we talk about, uh, the Chinese Exclusion Act, um, you know, just the whole history of Asians in America to today. People don't know this stuff. I mean, you don't learn it in high school. Maybe you learned it in college, but probably only if you take an Asian-American history course, which I did. Like that was the first time I knew about anything besides like a couple of paragraphs about Japanese internment. You know, I mean, just like, yeah, I, I'm, I'm hopeful that, that out of these tragedies blossoms kind of real, like real change, like not just the conversations, which is a good starting point. But I, I hope we really are able to rethink things. And coming back to why we're all here together, I, I really hope that we all as museum workers in whatever capacity and in whatever type of institution you're at, I hope we can all bring these things into our work. Anti-racism training, anti-bias, uh, social emotional learning, you know, all of those things that really help build citizenship and, and an understanding of, of one another and, and a respect for one another too. Sorry, I'm going on too long, but anyway, I just, I just wanted to say thank you to Heidi and thank you all for being here too. And thank you Laura for organizing this as well.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, thanks Diane. Anybody else want to kind of reflect or sorry Jesse?
I was just gonna piggyback a little off what Diane was just saying about, um, our lack of historical awareness that like, I, I live in the Bay area, which in California, which has a very large and longstanding Asian-American population in San Francisco and in Oakland and Berkeley. And, um, you know, this, this area considers itself to be a very progressive and very liberal, you know, champion of social rights and human rights. And yet, um, probably once or twice a week, I'm reading in the newspaper about another attack on an Asian-American woman, an Asian-American elder, um, people shopping in Oakland's Chinatown, being attacked and robbed on the street, like literally once a week for the past several months. And it's making a lot of local news and people are just kind of realizing like, oh, there is a Chinatown in Oakland still? Oh, people have been living in this area for hundreds of years. And like, it's just not something that people seem to have been very aware of for a place that is very liberal and talks openly about civil rights and people's rights and people's histories. And it's just been really, um, eye-opening to see that even in a place where I live, where I thought we did get this kind of education in high school, we did talk about, um, the Chinese Exclusion Act at high school. We all, I thought we all learned this and then it's really been, um, a little disturbing to see my own peers and my own family members not really have any awareness of what's going on today. So, um, thank you for sharing Diane and Heidi as well.
Yeah. And speaking to, you know, the lack of historical awareness, um, Diane, what you said about, and Jesse too, people just not knowing these things. Like I encounter college students all the time who are like, what do you mean? We had Japanese internment camps. What are you talking about? What do you mean? We had Native American boarding schools. What do you mean? You know, and it's just like all these really racist, terrible pieces of American history that somehow get left untouched or unlearned. It's, it's amazing and mind boggling to me. Um, it's upsetting. You know, I think that kind of goes without saying. So yeah, I mean, I, I see it all the time at the university that I work for, students coming in, not having a clue. And just makes you wonder like, why aren't we teaching these things? In American history classes? Yeah, like, yeah, exactly Heidi. So purposefully left out of their curriculum. Definitely agree with that.
Yeah, it's, it's studying. Oh, sorry. Go ahead Emily.
Oh, I was gonna jump in on that point. So, um, I work at a university that didn't send out a statement, but the same, or either the same week or around the same time, um, the only instructor as part of the Asian-American Studies Program left. Um, and they made that as part of their announcement, like the, the university also isn't supporting these studies and this history and this work. Um, and it's really difficult to continue doing, continue for them to do their scholarship and also support the students who are invested and who are interested. And, you know, in Philly, there have been a lot of incidents lately that have made the news and things happening. And I think like, hey, there's a lot going on in Philly generally. So everyone is really tired, but it's frustrating to continue to have to deal with everything that's happening all at once.
Yeah. And I think like a couple of people already mentioned, it's frustrating to see it continue to happen and for people to be in denial about it. And like I said, that's kind of how I feel like a lot of the people I work with are handling it. They're like, oh, well, I know these attacks keep happening, but surely they're not motivated by race. And you're like, well, what's the common denominator? Um, like, are you really, are we doing the same math? Cause like, I don't think we're, I'm not good at math, but I can tell you that I see this commonality. Um, so I think that's also the upsetting part is, you know, just seeing people deny it. It's like they're pulling the wool over their own eyes.
Yeah, I, um, I just saw an article, I think today about the airline pilots. United was saying that they're going to try to diversify their airline pilots who are like 98% white male. And like, when they announced this, like how much pushback they got? Because like people are so reactionary that they felt like diversity initiatives was a direct threat to them. And like, that's been like, so I grew up like outside of DC and like in a pretty like very hyper-educated professional environment. And, um, you know, that Diane, what you were saying that like people didn't know, like that there were people in your community that didn't know about like the Chinese Exclusion Act and Japanese internment. Like that never felt like my experience growing up. It felt like, oh, I'm like really like, this is a very educated community. But then you kind of realize how like in a bubble you are. And when you start looking outside of the community and you kind of realize that like this narrative of like patriotism doesn't, and like feeling proud of being American, like doesn't allow any room for critique in this like kind of like really dangerous way that like to say like, oh, like this act of violence was racially motivated. Like people get defensive about that and like that, that is like destroying their worldview. And, um, it makes it like really difficult to talk about because it's so like, um, like becomes like emotional and like a very like strange way where like somebody's entire like world could like crash down. It's been like, so I work in New Orleans and we, we've kind of like slowly changed our museum into like a social justice museum. And we talk a lot, but like kind of in a subtle way, but like all of our shows are dealing with like race and gender. And, um, the reactions that we get from our visitors, sometimes it's just like so surprising that your jaw is just like to the ground. Like our last show was featuring an African-American artist. And like, we had somebody call the museum like screaming on the phone, like saying that we were showing too many, too many black people in our museum. And like, when were we going to go back to like showing real art? And it was just like, what, like what motivates this reaction that like, that feels so threatening to give somebody else a voice and like, I don't know. And then in the museum field, like you start, I don't know. I sometimes feel like working in a museum is so like privileged and like so, um, like not contributing to a solution in a way. You know, like, I know obviously there's like the bigger, like we can tell this story, but I don't know. I guess like when I'm in collections and I'm just in my basement, I'm like, why am I, you know, what is so important about these like super precious objects that we're going to like, put, like, put all this energy into and effort into and, um, like how to make that feel like meaningful, I guess, in that bigger conversation?
Yeah, it's so funny. It's so funny that you said that, like not funny in a haha way, but ironic. Cause I was just thinking about that the other day. Like I was realizing that I was spending my days, like, don't tell my boss, I was spending my days doing more work for you. Get like for any MPN than I was doing my actual job. And then it occurred to me, because this feels meaningful. Whereas like, when I make a box for an object, I'm like, what am I doing? Like how, how is what I'm doing, making the world a better place? And so I often struggle with that as well. Um, so like, I identify with what you just said, I guess is what I'm saying.
Sierra, you were also talking about, um, people discomfort discussing race. You're reminding me, so before I went to museums, I worked, uh, as a third grade teacher at an independent school. And they have a program where once a month, um, kids would break into groups that they self-selected with their families. And there was, um, you know, white, uh, black, African diaspora, Asian Pacific Islander, Latinx, uh, multiracial. And then if people kind of didn't want to pick a group, there was another group. Um, and as you can imagine, this is very controversial. Like it was like written up in the New York Times several times. There, there were always a handful of parents that kind of didn't like it. But for me, I, I was one of the co-leaders of the Asian, the, the API group. And it, it was the best part of my job. Like it's what I looked forward to the most. And, um, you know, like you, you realize so many things because, oh, you know, you're with these kids all day, but you're, you're not talking overtly about things like race, especially with like third graders. But like seeing like my, my little Asian-American kids that would be like, there was a boy and he was, and I'm like, it's, it's okay to say black. That's, you're describing him. He's African-American. He's, he's black. And they're like, oh, is that racist to say? And I'm like, no, like, so that like, it's, it's like so ingrained, like practically from birth, like you cannot talk about race. Um, and that, that was like just so eye-opening to me. I was like, and this is, um, you know, speaking of like progressive, like this is like super progressive school, like every like, so like touchy feely, you know? So this is like, and again, in New York City, so you know, these are like the last kids that you'd think would be like, oh, I can't talk about race. So, you know, and, and, and these are, I mean, these are also like pretty elite kids. It's an expensive school. So you're just imagining like, okay, if these kids don't feel comfortable and there's no way that other kids, let alone adults are, are even approaching this kind of, this, this kind of level of like being okay discussing this. And then to, to turn that to what Sierra and Laura, you both were talking about, what, what's our duty in museums? I think, I, I think we are in an elite space and I think many people perceive museums as an elite space. And so for me, again, I'm in education. So for me, my, my entire goal, like in my life, is to bring people into museums who don't think they belong there. Whether it's visitors, whether it's families of color, families who feel like, uh, for, for whom finances are, are an issue, or whether it's other staff members, right? Like we can't, we're, we're parts of hiring committees or we're looking at resumes. I mean, like there's just, and, and it doesn't feel like we're changing the world because no one person can, right? But I, I think like we're in these spaces. So like, let's do what we can to, to bring people in, to show them that it is a welcoming space and of course, to make it a welcoming space, right? And, and again, I, I don't think any one of us, even though we're all obviously talented and amazing, none of us are going to like turn this whole ship around, right? But I, I think this is a small way, whether you're in an art museum or natural history or whatever. Like to just like bring that corner of learning curiosity, um, seeing other cultures. I, I know like in, in my classes, especially now that we're virtual, like I bring in as many artists of color as I can, as many women artists, gay artists, you know, like just whoever I can, I try to like really expose my students to that. And, and again, it's like a drop in the bucket, but like, I think every little bit helps and, and that's what it takes, right? It's like all of us making the conscious decision to say, I don't like the way things are. Again, I, I can't like blow it all up and start it over. So I'm going to like chip away however I can, um, in my, in my space.
Yeah, I think I, sorry Sierra, go ahead. Say that like, if, you know, if you sweep your own doorstep, the whole world will be clean as it's kind of like, you know, if you as an individual embrace, like fully embrace like justice as your philosophy in life, which, you know, but then sometimes I'm like, well, that's really naive because we are like a participant in this like power structure that is, um, sometimes is, does need like a major shakeup or like, um, you know, do you just hold out for 20 years to like, you're the boss and can like make real change? And then, then you're the old person that's out of touch.
I joke with my student workers about that all the time. I'm like, God, I hope I don't turn into one of those people. And I'm always like, hey, if I ever say anything that's super problematic or I have a point of view that is just wrong, like, will you tell me? And they were like, oh, we absolutely will. And I was like, great. I want you to tell me, like, I want you to tell me you're not seeing this from the right point of view. Have you considered this point of view? I'm like, I don't care if I'm your boss. I want you to tell me that stuff. And they're like, absolutely. I was like, that's the kind of transparency and communication we need, like in a workplace. Accountability. Yeah, Jenna.
Yeah, I wanted to chime in on what, um, what Diane and what Chloe was saying about like making the influence you can in your own sphere. Like right now I work for a software company that makes databases for museums. And that can seem like a very neutral space. It's just data, right? It's just information. And I think we're all kind of more aware that like, of course that's not neutral. Like data isn't neutral. It's what we make it, like we make it. And so of course it's biased. And so for example, one of our clients was asking for support for Asian languages in the database. And just technically, like from a tech perspective, Asian languages, certain Asian languages and character-based languages can operate a little bit differently than, uh, English languages or, uh, Roman numeral languages. And so it's like a tech challenge. And a lot of our developers and people were like, oh, like that's too complicated. Like, we're not going to do that. That's not a priority. None of our clients need that. I'm like, yeah, they do though. See, they asked for it and like people are expressing this. And like, then our data isn't accessible to anyone who reads in these other languages. They can't access it online. They can't view these collections in their native language, but they can in French and they can in Spanish and they can in English, but not in any Asian languages. And like, how are we building in that bias to our systems? And so I think we're trying to, um, I, right now, at this point in my life, that is my challenge or that is my sphere of influence where I can say, how is our data structurally in our database being racist? Like, how are we excluding people from using our databases? Just in these like silly little tiny ways that no one really thought of until it became a problem. Like, oh, we didn't index for Japanese? Guess we should do that, you know? And it's, it doesn't come up until someone brings it up and someone points it out. And so I think, um, there's a lot of ways that we can operate in the museum world, that we can be better in the museum world, that we don't really think of until someone else points it out to us. And go, ooh, we had a blind spot right there because it didn't affect us.
Yeah. That's a very good point, um, how databases are inherently racist. So good for you Jesse. I think that's great, the change that you're trying to make.
Well, yeah, I have no idea literally how to do it, but I can at least occasionally in meetings go, hey, that Kanji thing, can we get some, uh, can we get some answers?
But I think that's kind of where it starts, right? Is just kind of speaking up, like, um, we've had students come in. I work for a small art museum, just for context. And, um, we've had students come in and say, hey, why don't you show more black artists? And I'll be like, you know, that is a great question. Here's the director's card. I would love for you to email them and tell them that that's what you'd like to see as a student. And they do, and I'm like, you know, I feel like I can say it all I want, but until certain people hear it from certain constituencies, um, they're not going to act on it. So I feel like speaking up or like doing the little things that we think are miniscule, I think those actions can add up over time. Um, and you know, we, we do what we can, right? I think we have, we have to look at it that way.
I would say, you know, like obviously databases, but like, I think you have to look even like broader than that. And just like the collections and like the physical space. And like, you know, this is something we've been running into a lot at my museum recently, which is like, we're very conscious of like, be like having more diversity and showing diversity in the museum. We've completely taken all of our permanent collection off exhibit and we use the entire museum as traveling exhibitions. And that way we can like show these more contemporary voices that like better reflect like our world today. But in the end, we have like 9,000 objects in storage that are, you know, it's like, But in the end, we have like nine thousand objects in storage that are, you know, it's like a bunch of portraits of like dead white men who were all rich southerners, so of all were like connected to the slave trade in some way. Um, you know, and then we also have this like people want art to decorate their, around campus and we have to be like, well, you know, they, they, there's uh, I think it's like this is very contemporary like awareness, right? That like we have this collection that is inherently like problematic. Um, and beyond just like collecting new pieces, it's, I think like it demands like a reinterpretation of the objects that you have in storage too, like it's not like there's only like one narrative about that one object, it's like can we now use this portrait of this dead white man to talk about how he owned a plantation instead of he donated money to find our, fund our library? Or like, can you tell both of those stories in a way that is um still not like amplifying that voice? Right now, we just don't show our collection like at all.
I had a question, actually. I was wondering how many of us here have uh, or are working for organizations that already have a D E A I committee of some sort? Got a probably hand, a few solid hands. Okay, cool. Uh, I was just kind of curious because like I think being an EMP, like part of the frustrating thing is like you so powerfully feel like you know the direction you should go and you want to charge forth and you know, my particular organization, the Atlanta History Center, I mean, we, we've basically recently formed an internal D E I committee or committee and, you know, I feel like there's always this trepidation of like, how much can we actually do? But I'm also like really passionate and, and feel like positive that my staff will, we will get stuff done. But it's in times like these where I just feel a little bit exhausted. I'm like, oh, how will we be able to, to fix everything? Because I think everybody in the museum world right now kind of feels the same kind of frustration. We want to support our community, but we're museums. Like, I, I, I don't know, I feel, you know, we're, we're gonna work on, you know, having a better, you know, something that we're gonna be working on as a committee is having a better response and follow-up with, you know, tragedies that happen. Definitely with our recent attack, we want to make sure that we're actually being responsive in time. Because, you know, part of the reason why we have this D A, D A I community net, uh, committee now or formed it, even though staff has wanted for a while is that you know, I think we've also felt kind of a lackluster response when the, you know, recent civil rights movement happened in the summer. Um, so I, does anybody here have tips on just how? I mean, I guess we're all kind of in the same boat, right? We wouldn't be here if we weren't passionate about, you know, being able to support our AAPI communities as well as all of our communities where you know, we, we intrinsically have to like, also keep up these established white empires. It's, it's like a very conflicting feeling, but have you guys had any kind of like, you know, good action plans you can reference for a D E I group? Um, just for like, you know, I know there's like, we have one here for any MPN. Um, but if anybody has good resources, well, I definitely want to take that long.
Looks like Diane just dropped something in the chat. Uh, museum action.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I, one tool, my museum, I, I work at the Milwaukee Art Museum and actually the head of education, because of course it was someone in education. She pushed for us to do this mass action um, assessment where we really, we went through and it really breaks down like every aspect of the museum's public face, what's going on behind the scenes. And everyone had to do it. And over the course of our um, all-staff meetings that have been virtual this past year, um, a different department presented uh, some of their findings. And then everyone also had to come up with a list of D E I related goals within their own personal um, job. Their, like, you know, whatever they had control over. And it was really interesting. I, I think one of the main findings that we found out besides that, well, we already knew that we're like a very white staff mostly, was that we don't even know what's going on in other areas, like we're so siloed, like I, I, I learned so mu- and I'm, I'm a little new to, to my institution also, but like it's like, yeah, education, like we're doing all these cool things, but like people don't even know, you know, or like wow, I had no idea that like our food and beverage department is like doing this cool stuff, you know, that kind of thing. So obviously, it's, it's a major project to, to undertake, to really ask everyone to, to follow through with this, but it, it's been, it's been successful, at least, and this is like back to what I was saying at the beginning, like, we're taking good first steps, we're having the conversations, we're looking at ourselves, but like what next? Like, are we gonna fulfill those goals? Like, that's kind of a big will see, but um, yeah, I, that was, that's been very transformative uh, for me personally at least. So, yeah, I really recommend that.
And it looks like Sierra um, was asking what the mass action assessment entails.
Uh, I can talk a little bit about that, um, unless um, Diane, if you want to talk about it.
Go for it. I, I'm gonna try to find the link with the, the assessment so I can drop that and see if you can look at it, but yeah, go ahead.
Perfect. Um, I actually create, uh, put I tr- it had to be tweaked a little bit, but I put the assessment into Google Form. Um, kind of structure. So I can look that up and share that with y'all. Um, my computer's not being too friendly right now, so I'm gonna have to do that through email later. Um, with the form version, because I was trying to get it out to my museum. Um, but it goes through uh, these different kind of levels of engagement that you have, like throughout your practice, policy, um, process. And you go and rate like how involved your museum has been. I think it's like one through five. Um, and you go through and you rate these different things that mass action has brought up and through their um toolkit, it kind of will outline why these different things that they're bringing up in the assessment is important. Um. I know that's not very specific, so maybe Diane can add to that.
Yeah, no, you got it. I mean, um, Jesse dropped the link, so you can see, uh, you know, I'm just, it's several pages, but scrolling through, like, I'm, I'm just picking one at random. Domain, Culture and Climate. Museum has taken vigorous initiative to transform itself with expanding awareness, acceptance and action for diversity, equity and inclusion. Gonna go ahead and guess, not many museums in the United States are super strong there, but um, I do like how they describe the numerical um, differentiations. Um, sorry. So it's zero to five, zero is no actions at this time, like we haven't even talked about this. Um, we're thinking, we're learning and thinking about it in the assessment phase. Initial action and planning efforts, making progress, and then five, the like ideal is fully integrated policy, practice or process. So again, you're probably not gonna see many fives. Hopefully you also won't see a lot of zeros, but at least at my institution, it was a lot of ones and twos, like maybe three, where it was like, yeah, we're aware of this and we've had conversations, but we haven't really taken anything off the ground from there. So it's, it's all about kind of like pushing things in that direction. And I think, as you were saying, Heidi, I think the way that they, they break everything down makes it tangible, because it, it's very overwhelming to be like, oh, let's, let's diversify, let's represent everyone, effort, you know, like it's a lot. So it, it breaks things down in kind of manageable chunks, I think, or relatively manageable.
I'll definitely be looking at that. Thanks, Diane.
I feel like I want to follow up um, on Ariana's point and thinking about like what can we do on an institutional level? What can we do? I think of like for us EMP chapters, as National EMP to support communities, because let's be real, like the few of us who are here are you know, doing the preparation, getting the work, but what about the EMPs who don't have that support at their um, work site? Um, I would love for National EMP to be a space for them that they've that they can come to when their workplaces are not that inclusive. And I think the other side of that is the other side of that for me is it's just been a very difficult year to be a BIPOC individual in the US. I, I just feel like it's just been so taxing, because it's like, you know, I spent like all the beginning of last year trying to advocate against um, anti-Asian sentiments, then immediately after that, we were dealing with the summer with like all the marches and protests and issues around like George Floyd's murder, Breonna Taylor's death, um, and murder, um, and so many others. Um, then we were like talking about immigration issues and we were talking about like, just like anti La- like Latino or Hispanic sentiments, and then we went back to Asian, and then we went back to Black, like, it's just so much like weighing on you. And I, I don't know if it feels so much more dire to be supportive and create a supportive environment because I am a Black woman, or if it feels like this because I I have to say, if you haven't come to Bubbles for your troubles, uh, um, Monday's event was really eye-opening and heartbreaking for me to create that space for people to tell about their stories. We heard so many horrific stories about people just being mistreated at their workplaces. And like, I had come into that event being like, hey, you know, let's complain about like shitty internship applications I've received and like horrifying things I've received. Um, but there was so much more to talk about in terms of like poor collections management, racism in the workplace, like inequity in the workplace, like it was just so, it was, and like these were EMPs who were just looking for someone to talk to about this. And I'm like, I can't imagine that in all of these institutions, especially those who are being dragged in their change the whatever museum thing or change the museum as a whole or in their unionization uh, groups that the EMPs that are working there are getting the support that they need. Um, or even like, uh, forget EMPs, like museum professionals, period. Like people who are invested in this are, are getting the support that they need. So I guess like my big, my big question is what more could we be doing um, as an organization, as a collective of chapters? To, to better support folks um, who who might encap- because like, uh, the sad part of this is like, this is not gonna end, like this is gonna continue for this year and the year after and and so on. So I, I guess for me, I, I would love to have like basically a toolkit or something in place that for us, like as, as shitty as that sounds, I, I would just love to be able to be like, okay, we're deploying like Plan Z or whatever we, we end up calling it to like create, you know, maybe it's like a town hall like this to create a space, maybe we have a statement ready that we can just like get, we just know we're gonna put out a statement within twenty-four hours and like have a process in place. Or is that just too formulaic? Is this like? I feel bad that like I'm trying to like organize around trauma, like.
And I know that Heidi and myself and our other H E L E M P co-chair have, have found it useful in our group to have a decompression session every so often where people can just I know y'all have been doing self-care stuff too, and I think, I think that's the other half of this. I think we, we're getting whiplash, like it from all angles. Um, and I do think, you know, obviously we should be doing a lot of the work to help and you know, to do this, like have a town hall, but I think the other side of that coin is how are we gonna recharge ourselves? Because we're all so drained. You know, um, so that's something, you know, the H L E M P, like we had our first traditional self-care meetup, I want to say two months ago. And, oh, you could tell it was needed. Oh, my goodness. Um, and I, I think, I think we could have more of that or even virtual things like, hey, click this to punch Brian Kemp in the face, because you know, you know, and uh, we, we, you know, things we combat with also are, are just our horrible governor and voter suppression. And, you know, we're getting whiplash from that area too. So I'm wondering if there's creative ways where we can just bond with each other in a way, because I know we're all siloed right now, especially still with COVID being a reality. I don't know, I, but that's what I'm, is the ability to have joy again in between, in between spaces of, of decompression and hardship.
Um, I'll just, this is not an answer to that question, because obviously that's a hefty question, but I will say that um, I chaired the New Orleans EMP chapter, which has been pretty dormant and um, even before COVID, but COVID has cut pretty much killed it. But we just had our first event last week in over a year and very small showing, but um, what I've started doing is organizing communal volunteer day, which, you know, all that with like free labor and like being so drained to then ask people to also like go volunteer their time over the weekend is, I, I know that's like a really big ask, but I found something like incredibly cathartic about it and in just that like bringing EMPs from like all these different museums together to like actually use their skills and like really recognize everyone's expertise in the room and then be able to offer that to members of the community that are not museums, but mem- like people in the community who have important objects, have family treasures, have some story that's like important to tell and to kind of like take that collective like EMP skill and then like share it with somebody that's not somebody in power, but somebody who's actually quite like disempowered and really needs help. Um, that was something that I found was like surprisingly like made me like feel a lot more empowered in my job than I would have expected to kind of feel like, oh, like this is something valuable that like people need and not in this like self-serving way, but like in these like very like small tasks that are like really significant in certain people's lives. That's just a, a small example, but I thought I would share.
I, I just want to co-sign what Jesse said in the chat about, you know, the, the, the virtualness has been like a plus and a negative, like I just speaking on behalf of National EMP, I have been able to build this ru- like relationships with every single board member virtually that I, I don't think we would have ever been able to have if we weren't all stuck at home here for the past year. Uh, but on the other hand, like I just want to be able to see people, I want to be able to have in-person EMP sessions where people can go and move themselves away from their home, from their their apartment, their, wherever they are to be in community. I, there's something so special about being in community with folks and I don't know about you all, but uh, museums have opened in New Jersey and New York, but I, I haven't been to any. Um, I went to Storm King, which is a sculpture park last week, and that was like the closest thing I've had to like arts and culture in over a year. Um, but it felt so cathartic to be outside, to be around art, to like think and, and interpret and, and, and explore something outside of like the four walls of my office. So it's it's a lot. I think there's definitely some virtual issues, but I think there's, there is value in us maybe even talking about in-person things um, in the near future, just so like, obviously to be safe, the COVID safe for folks, but there's just such a need for, for in-person community. Um, and even when we think about, you know, I know that we at National have been talking about, you know, what if we hosted our own unconference or something like that? One of the big things that we've all kind of like walked away with is that idea of being in person and being um, being in community with each other in some capacity. We just have to think about what that looks like. So I think there's something that, there's something missing um, in all of this that is, is making us feel even worse than we probably would have felt if we were all together. Also, Sierra, I feel like we're all coming to visit you in New Orleans now.
Um, this is, this is super not in person, but um, something that's been really helpful to me. There's a group, I think organized by N A E A, the National Art Educators Alliance, and, and they have a museum ed division, but they started, I think in November, monthly um, BIPOC meetings for just anyone who wanted to come. And uh, there, there was a woman that I saw a couple times and then she mentioned growing up in New Jersey, just like me and Sierra. Um, and I, so I, I emailed her after and I was like, hey, I'm from New Jersey too. And we kind of like have this really nice email pen palship. Um, she is a Black woman working in a art museum in Washington DC. Um, so like i- it's that exact thing, you know, that we've been talking about, like, she gets it, I get her. And it's not like we're writing long missives about like, oh, the racial struggle. I mean, you know, we're mostly just talking about our program, like we've attended each other's program. And it's not like we're writing long missives about like, oh, the racial struggle. I mean, you know, we're mostly just talking about our program, like we've attended each other's programs. But um, yeah, it's been, it's been so nice to just like connect with someone who is experiencing a lot of the same things, but has nothing to do with you, like, like she, her work has nothing to do with mine. Um, I and I I keep thinking, um, Sierra P, you were talking about like work-heavy kind of things. I mean, this would be extremely work-heavy. And I know EMP groups have done like postcard and and Christmas card exchanges and things like that, but I I just keep thinking, I was like, it'd be really nice if we could do this on a larger scale. Again, it would be a ton of work. But just like connecting with someone, maybe with like X number of shared interests or experiences, you know, whatever. Um, but it's been so night, like I it, I feel like a kid again, like opening the mailbox and seeing like a a pen pal letter, like whenever she we, you know, we email each other maybe like once a week or so and like, it's always so nice to hear from her and um, yeah, I just, I I I wish we could bring that experience to to more people, cause it's been really positive for me.
Love that.
All right, Sierra, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say, it reminded me, oh, my god, my cat is attacking me, sorry. Like, um, you know, like, I think I mean, I've had like so many different, like tried different like museum mentors in my career and like not had great, you know, like, okay, to get some like very technical advice, but in the end, like, there's such a there's the always the age gap and there's the experience gap and like a power gap and like I have found that the more rewarding conversations I've had have been with like us, you know, like peers who are kind of going through the same thing and we, and like it's not like somebody who's older in the field, like has more experience, cause we all have like different experiences and there is so much more, we can like learn from each other. I like, yeah, I really love that idea of a museum pen pal or just these conversations, you know, more frequent.
Yeah, I love that idea too.
I I do think, and I I so appreciate everyone who's here right now, but I think a group Zoom where you don't know how many people there are, and especially when you're talking about like sensitive topics, I think that can be difficult. And um so that that's especially why I'm thinking either like one-on-one or if if we said beforehand, like we'll be in small groups or it's just it, I know it's intimidating for me, like I sign up for things and it's, you just get the Zoom link and you're like, what is this? I don't know. Are there gonna be a hundred people? Are there gonna be three? Um, and then, yeah, again, when it's a topic that is very like, ugh, it's 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 a little difficult and emotions come out and do I wanna cry in front of a bunch of people, you know? So I I think, but I think definitely a mix of kind of open um, town hall styles like we're doing now and small group or or even one-on-one would would be really nice.
I just dropped this in the chat, but I I agree with you, like even like for the event on Monday, like there was like twenty something of us and I was like there was too many people here for everyone to share a story, but it was also, I feel like there was something magical about that number twenty-five where it was, it was like too many for everyone to speak, but just enough to feel supported by the community, if that makes sense. Like there was something so heartwarming and as I said, this this event made me like super sad, but like there was something heartwarming about the minute something happened, everyone was like, oh, hell no, this shouldn't be happening. This is what we should be doing. This needs to be this, this, the, like, like people were like, you should talk to a dr- like cap- keep receipts, like, do, and like, just like the fact that everyone immediately jumped to troubleshooting was so huge and just shows how caring and responsive this community is. And I agree, I love a small group. And so what I said in the chat was like what if we did open up like a museum pen pal thing that we like had people sign up for? And then, you know, yeah, Laura, like you, when we do that postcard exchange, it grows into like a pen pal program. And then maybe quarterly, we have like a meeting like this where folks can come together, but they go into like little breakout rooms that are like randomly assigned or we we can assign them based off of like maybe region or something where it's a little smaller, more intimate, but um, you still get that kind of like FaceTime with people. Uh, but yeah, I think that like this is important. I do not think that Bubbles for your troubles would be successful in person, and the reason why I feel that way is um, people from all over are able to participate in it. Um, and you can, and most people participate in it in the privacy of their homes. Uh, whereas if we were in person, we would have to find like a place where it was like private and comfortable and it would be limited to whoever was there on site at that time. Uh, so I would do, I would keep bubbles virtual in the long term. Um unfortunately. Or fortunately, actually, um, I I think it's just to the benefit of everyone.
Well, um, I know we're running close to time, so um I just wanna make sure we have time to share the resources. Um, for today, that we have for today, but um, were there any other comments or reflections that anybody wanted to share before we do that?
Uh, something really quick that um I forget who said it, but talking about like how to show that your like progress is actually happening and maybe it's not so concrete yet. Um, something that Brandy McDonald was talking about at the Museum of Us, she was saying how they put up these signs saying that we're in the process of truth telling. Um, please contact us with your feedback of what you think um should be included in that. Um, just a quick thing.
So this was like a a sign that they that they put up like in their work or like at the front, oh.
Like an official sign at Museum of Us inside the gallery spaces.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, Tulane has that also. They have um, like a training that you can do. They have one for um like LGBTQ a lot ally and then um I think one's like a like a kind of race, more racial. Um, anyways, and they they give like a little badge and it's for the professors and like you do this training and then you get the badge and you put it on your door and it kind of sends like I'm someone you can talk to about this and like any student is like allowed to come to office hours and like knows that that sticker means that they've like done this training and have the resources to like respond. Um I don't know how successful the program is, like how many students use it, but it's a nice concept.
And then Jenna had um a comment, um, I don't know exactly how to frame it, but maybe we could put on some or put together some kind of resource packet um to help EMPs who don't have an HR department. I feel like we were talking about this recently somewhere. Was it at Bubbles? I don't remember. Um but like a recent, I mean, that's a good idea, cause and even museums that do have HR departments, uh-huh. I know mine isn't very helpful, so.
I think that would be great, actually, and maybe that's something that we can, I, one thing that I think that National has been prioritizing that I'm really proud of is um, every time we think about bringing someone in, we try to think about if we can bring in someone who has like been furloughed or lost their job. And I think this might be a great opportunity. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure how heavily affected HR was during this time period. But maybe this is an opportunity for us to connect with some HR uh EMPs or HR folks who can help us pull together some great resources and maybe this is a great opportunity for us to ki- connect with our larger organizations as well. Um, I'm thinking regional and state versus national.
Yeah, and one last thing to kind of piggyback off of this, cause the idea started formulating, Sarah, when you were talking of like, could we have some type of language to help EMPs if they wanna, you know, have some type of statement or something, but I think at least from what I've experienced and heard from other friends and peers is that it's hard to talk about certain HR things when there either isn't someone there to talk about it to, or like it's just directly with the director or it just like, maybe we could think of some way to help people start to have those conversations, whether it's in person or just like in a written form. So yeah, still, still thinking it through though.
This is a horrible side comment and maybe more appropriate for a Bubbles conversation, but I I had to go to HR uh last year about an issue that I had with my boss and I and a lot of my other colleagues were having issues with my boss as well, and I told them that I went to HR and kind of was like, you know, maybe you should go talk, I'll give him your number. And um, he called me, the HR guy called me and told me to stop doing that because it it is like me inciting discontent among the group and like that was grounds for like dismissal and like I mean, insane, but that is how HR works and like there's this such a fear of like community organizing that like that's enough to like make any complaint that you made totally obsolete and like let them fire you. So um, yeah, I think like if there is a way to like talk to an HR person about like how to do that in a safe way, because I realized like I thought going to HR was the safe way to do that and it ended up not being safe at all.
Yeah, I had to complain about my boss a couple years ago and they basically told me she's been here twenty years, she's gonna retire in like two, can you just like deal with it until then? And I was like, you want me to deal with, like you've known this was a problem for twenty years and you so just yes to everything that you just said. Jesse said in the chat, two women went to complain about a harasser and we were labeled as the problem, since apparently they were conspiring to get him fired. So I think we kind of all just agreed that like coming up with some kind of resource for EMPs so that they don't have to go to HR is probably much needed. Yeah, Sierra, like you said, it's an HR tactic, yeah. Yeah. Well, um, just again, in the interest of time, um, if there aren't any other comments, I think um, I wanted to just quickly go over the resources that we have and anybody can feel free to chime into if you have other resources that we didn't think about or that we just didn't have an opportunity to include. Um, so first, I wanna just express that through all of this, through all of the chaos, through all of these horrible things that have been happening, it's still important that we take the time for self-care. And I know it can seem difficult to fit in and it can seem trivial when there's so many horrible things happening around us, um, but it's just really important because I think the old expression goes, you can't pour it from an empty cup. Um, so we gotta take care of ourselves. Um, the first thing I wanted to say is that especially in cases like this, it's really important that we acknowledge the grief and the pain that we're feeling. Because trying to suppress that grief or pretend like it's not there um isn't helping anybody. Um, so ways that we can do that, um, we can reach out to friends, colleagues, um coworkers, um, connect, right? Just connect, even if it's like calling a relative on the phone and just talking to them. Uh, we can't be afraid to do that. And I think it, that kind of goes along with what we were just talking about. How this pandemic hasn't been helping things because we haven't been able to see people in person. And I think that it's been hard for us to express our grief and our pain um because of that. Um, but you know, pick up the phone, um, journal, write. I don't know how many of you are artists or poets, but um, write a poem. Um, it really does help, at least it helps me write to your legislator. Uh-huh. I know they say never to send an angry email, but sometimes um it's warranted. Um, so you know, you can express yourself in a number of ways. Um, so you know, journal, write. Um, write something on social media. Um, I see that a lot. Um, that's a way to connect, right? Um, at the same time, contradicting myself a little bit, um, less screen time is also uh really recommended. Um, I know personally, over the weekends, I've been trying to unplug because for me, it's stressful. Um, I don't respond to work emails. Um, sometimes I don't even go on Twitter, cause I just can't handle it. Um, you know, we all need that mental break. Um, setting boundaries, it kind of goes along with that, right? We're setting boundaries for ourself. And I think in along the same lines, setting boundaries, um, you're allowed to say no um, without feeling guilty, um, especially if something happened recently that is weighing heavily on your mind or um, that has caused you to feel pain, it's okay to step back and say, listen, I can't do this today. Um, you should feel okay saying that. So just as a personal example, um, during the Capitol riots, I was not okay. I think a lot of us weren't okay. And I straight up told my boss, I'm going home. Um, because I can't concentrate and I can't work today. Um, and so we need to, I think we need to feel okay setting those boundaries. Um, so acknowledge grief, pain, do things like connect with others, journal writes, whether that's writing a poem, writing a social media post in solidarity, reaching out to other people who might be feeling that same grief or pain that you are and starting a conversation, kind of like what we're doing right now. I consider this um a time that we're connecting, right? We're acknowledging our grief um together. And then another way is to take positive action. And so now we're kind of gonna kind of get into oops, um, the resources that we've prepared for you. Um a lot of them that you see here were included in the statement that we released um, earlier this month, so you might recognize some of them. Um, but you might be asking yourself, you know, I want to take positive action, like what are my next steps? What are some concrete steps that I can take? And I actually wanted to take this opportunity to say if anybody who has participated in the Holaback Intervention Training, do you wanna talk about that? Cause this was something new to me. Diane and Heidi, I think you mentioned that you went through that.
Yeah, I I'm happy to talk about it a little, so um the link is there. Oh, I'll I'll drop it in the chat in a sec too, but um there are three different one-hour uh trainings. One is for kind of basic bystander intervention, and this is for any time you see anything happening in public that is not cool. This is not just for Asian-American related violence, but um a- as Heidi mentioned, there's five Ds that they that they outlined very clearly. Now I'm quizzing myself, well, I remember it's like distract, deflect, delay, delegate, Heidi was the last one. There's one more, anyway. Disrupt, thank you. So they they go through, it's it's very well done. I I do not like a meeting that meanders and they they really keep it going. It's a webinar, so you don't get to directly interact, but they do a lot of polling and then they share the the results, so you get a lot of real time, like what are people feeling? And like right now, there's like thousands of people taking all of these trainings at a time, so it's very interesting to see what people are saying. Um, the the other training is sort of like next level bystanders, so like if you want to intervene, how to do that effectively and safely. Uh, for me personally, I took that training and I was like, you know what? That's not me. I'm not I I mean, specifically if something is happening against an Asian-American person, like I'm not gonna help, I'm also Asian. But even even if that's not the case, I'm like, you know what? This has made me realize like I should not intervene, like I don't feel safe. I I get angry easily, like, okay, that so that helped me with that. And then there's one for Asian-American people, if they themselves are experiencing uh any kind of harassment or violence, um, what to do. But I I absolutely recommend the bystander training, it's excellent. Um, yeah, it it's it's just very clear. They they do even go, speaking of Asian-American history, they even go into like a little like kind of quick overview of um kind of the the greatest hits of of Asian-American history. Um, yeah, I I can't recommend it enough. It's free, but they, you know, they take donations. Um, and I'll I'll grab that link so that I can drop in the chat right now.
Thanks, Diane. Um, I signed up for it for one of the sessions next month, um, so I'm excited to to participate in that myself. Um, so that I wanted to make sure we talked about, cause I think that's really important. Um, and then um, so I think that kind of falls under this educate category, right? We have to kind of um educate ourselves about how um, we can help others, um, how we can help the AAPI community, how we can be better allies. Um, and so um, one, one resource that I particularly like um, the Smithsonian Asian Pacific American Center, um, they actually, I'm gonna bring it up, cause I think I have it up right now. If I can find it. Sorry, bear with me. Um, so they have like, they gathered like a list of resources, like all these different museums have put um Smithsonian museums have put lists on their websites, um, and they're all different Um, Smithsonian museums have put lists on their websites, um, and they're all different kinds of resources, so. Resources for educators, um, exhibitions that you can check out, um, activities that you can do. Um, blogs, so like reading materials, um, and they're not the only one listed, of course, um, there are others as well. Um, so the National Museum of African American History and Culture, just to give you another example. Um, talks about rate, you know, talking about race, um, resources to help us do that. Historical resources, um, oral histories, blogs, um, and then they even in this case pulled some of their own objects from their collection. Um, so I thought this resource or this database, I guess you could even call it. Um, is super cool and I know I plan on using it, uh, when I talk about. Um, decolonization and addressing race in the museum when I teach in the fall, so I was excited to come across this resource. Um, and then. Let's see. If I can figure out my way around a computer. Okay, good.
Laura, could I, could I add one more thing while you're getting reset up?
Um, yes.
I I share this because I like having like really concrete takeaways, so I I'm just throwing a couple more out there. Um, I saw a lot of people posting on social media and whatever, like, reach out to your Asian friends, much like. Last June, people were like, reach out to your black friends and I think that's great and I I so appreciate everyone who did reach out to me. Uh, this past month, but, um, I I'd say, keep thinking about like that next step, like have a real conversation, like say. Hey, can we talk on the phone? Like, how are you doing? It's like a good chance to reconnect, um, if this is possible for you. Um, I know something that I've been hearing my Asian American friends. Do is, uh, like a friend of mine who's also Korean American, she's in LA, she was feeling nervous about going like grocery shopping with her son. So she has a friend who they go, a a white friend who they go grocery shopping together and she just feels better and. I I know for me personally, I I've been more nervous about going out alone also because I'm just like, I don't know what's going on. Um, I I usually run in on a trail that's right near me and I've been happy because it's warmed up, but there was. I don't, I don't think this is even an Asian person, but there there was an attack on a woman recently, so I've been like, okay, I'm not, I'm not doing that anymore. And I I I'm lucky, I ha- I I live with my boyfriend, he's white, um, so we're usually together, we usually drive, but, um. You know, like when we walk around, I I still, I I'm fully vaccinated now, I still wear my mask when I pass by people. And he was kind of like. You don't need to do that. And I was like, you know what? I don't want to give people any reason to say anything to me. I I know I don't need this, but this is like my signal of like, hey, I'm cool, I'm safe, and I think he hadn't really thought about that. Um, so you you know, like, like have those real conversations and and really say like, hey, like. How are you feeling when you go outside? You know, like, uh, again, it's nice to be like, hey, thinking of you, hope you're okay, but like. Think about, and then of course this is to your comfort and whatever your relationship with the person is, but. But think about like what what they're really experiencing day to day and this, of course, is not just Asian American people, but. Um, yeah, I think I think we all just really need to be here for each other and there's there's ways you can do that. For your friends or your neighbors. I mean, there's been so much about mutual aid recently. Are there Asian American elders near you that you could get groceries for? You know, like whatever it is, um. Because, you know, we all work in museums and we don't have a ton of money to donate to things, so. So there there's other options too, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
No, that's a really good point, Diane. I thank you for pointing that out, um. Because I think there is a lot more that we could be doing besides asking you, hey, how are you doing? Um, I think. You know, that's a really good point and I I admit I haven't done that. I haven't asked my Asian American friends like. Hey, what is, I mean, what what are have been your experiences in the past couple of weeks, you know? Like, how can I help? Um, so I, I'll definitely be doing that now, um, thank you. And like you said, we're all not, we're we're not all rich, so I think, you know, it's great for you to point out ways that we can help that. You know, don't cost us any money, um, like supporting or donating to causes, you know, we might not have the money to do that, so. Um, so then, um, there are other resources for you as well, um, other organizations that you can check out such as the. Asian American Resource Center and they're actually based in Duluth, Georgia. Um, and then also the Korean American Coalition, um, and both of these organizations, um, are in Georgia, so. They're, you know, right there where this happened or. I shouldn't say where this happened because it's happening all over the country, um, but where this event from last month happened. Um, and they both empower and strengthen communities by providing different types of services like. Um, the Asian American Resource Center, um, has two programs going on right now. Um, one, I think, was a like a language program to help teach English. Um, and then also the other one was rehoming, so helping the homeless population in the area. Um, and then I know that the Korean American Coalition, um, just like. Stop AAPI Hate, you can actually report hate crimes that you've either witnessed or seen. Um, on their website and I believe it's like right on their homepage too, so I thought that that was really excellent. Um, so I definitely encourage you to check that out as well. Um. Asian Americans Advancing Justice, Atlanta is another really awesome one to check out. Um, I believe that they have a fundraiser going on right now. Um, and then again, just, you know, being mindful of time. Um, I'll skip down to the Social Justice in Museums resource list that Emily shared in the original statement. Um, that is a great kind of, I don't want to, it's not like a syllabus, but it's like a. A shared Google Doc created by Latanya Autry, who is one of the co-founders of the Museums Are Not Neutral movement. And it's just like a list of, um, resources for, you know, how to be an anti-racist and just general social justice and museums. Um, articles you can read, conference sessions, you can watch, things like that. Um, and she adds to it, um, too, so it's constantly evolving and changing. And I can send this, this slide or this PowerPoint out to to people because these are all links, but I realize. Um, you know. You can't click on here, so, um, I can send that out too. Um, and then Diane, you mentioned that the victims' families, um, from the Atlanta shooting, they have GoFundMes going?
Yeah, I dropped that in the chat, I'll I'll.
Oh, awesome, thank you, I didn't see it.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, you're you're doing great. There's a lot happening at once, so. These are all the, um, they're all verified, um, and they're all family members of people who were killed. People who survived, um, yeah, so that that's, i- if you have some extra dollars, that's a great place. I I mean, I will say also, um, that, you know, how can, how can you choose when there's so many terrible things happening in the world? But, um, I, there is a a fund for Dante Wright's, um, family as well, so I don't. It it's terrible to choose, give money to everybody, but, um, and but that's that's a list for, um, the the Atlanta specific shooting.
And then if anybody thinks of any other resources that, you know, I didn't put on this one slide, like feel free to also drop them in the chat or. You can share them with us right now too. Ariana said regarding memoirs, if reading is something you have time for in May, this is Atlanta EMP. Um. Yes, um, there's a lecture with Michelle Zoner.
Oh, my gosh, that book is so good. I cried multiple times. She's, um, she's Japanese Breakfast, if you're familiar with her, she's a musician, she's, um. Uh, Korean American, her mother is Korean or was Korean, her mother passed away and her father is white American. And this book is about, uh, her mother getting sick and then passing away when she was like twenty five, something like that. But there there's quite a bit about, um, her Korean heritage and like connecting with it. Um, although, speaking of books, uh, Minor Feelings by Kathy Park Hong is excellent, it's essays. It's, um, it's specifically about the Asian American experience, but I I think like. It 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 resonates in many ways, being female, being just marginalized, but she. Put so many things into words that like I've felt my entire life and like couldn't quite. Wrap my head around, um, it it's such a wonderful book, I can't recommend it enough. It also just came out in paperback, so you can pick it up for cheap. Or you can get it from the library.
I'll have to check that out. So many great resources that I'm getting tonight. I wrote them all down. Okay, um, well, that's everything that I had, um, does anybody else want? Want to drop another resource or just add another comment, another reflection? Thanks for dealing with my awkward not knowing how to work technology moments, I appreciate it. Struggling hard today.
Thank you all so much for coming and thank you all so much for sharing, um, and thank you all so much for being open about your experiences.